Alrighty, it's seven o'clock and the CMR Unified School District Board of Trustees is reconvening into regular session. We've been in closed session since 5:45 discussing conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, and conference with labor negotiators, and we have no announcements out of closed session. Dr. Fawcett, would you like to introduce our flag salute hosts for tonight?
It would be my pleasure, President Martin. So I'd like to invite up Fidel Campos, who's a fourth grader. He's a bobcat that has been working really hard this year in every aspect of learning beyond academics. He's a student that can be incredibly reflective and strive to learn from mistakes and grow. He's also one of those students that will say hello to every staff member when he sees them on campus and isn't afraid to talk to them about one of his interests or show them something he recently learned or drew. So we're very excited to have you up here, Fidel. It is your opportunity to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up.
Okay, do I say it right now?
Yes.
Please stand with your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Fidel? So President Martin, who oversees our...
Alrighty, we're gonna move on to the communications part of our agenda. Student representatives from the board. I think we're gonna start with Aurora Grande High School, Benny Wenzel.
Thank you so much and good evening. I'm so excited to be back here this month to share all the amazing things going down at Aurora Grande High School, as well as touch up over some of the topics that I mentioned last month. The first thing I would like to start with is our leadership program. All three leadership classes have been super busy with a multitude of events. One of those being Kindness Week, an event we threw on a few weeks ago, where we had activities every day, as well as dress-up days every day, and then ended the week with a rally and a football game. We have also been in ASB putting on lunchtime events every Friday at lunch to try to hit those students that we aren't always reaching at the big events such as football and the rallies. We have been selling spirit packs that have spiritware for the upcoming football games, which are just a nice affordable way to give students the spirit that they so desperately want when they're in our amazing Blue Zoo. And every time we have been selling those, we have been lucky enough that they have been selling out. Yesterday, we had our class officer elections where dozens of students ran for only sixteen positions. These class officers will be very busy with homecoming, which is upcoming. And speaking of homecoming, we have decided on an exciting theme this year. This year's theme is "Time to Shine." The dress-up days are "Rise and Shine," where students are gonna be bringing blankets or teddy bears, rock stars slash pop stars, where they're gonna be wearing band t-shirts or artist t-shirts, "Future is Bright," where they're gonna be wearing college gear, such as Cal Poly, or career gear, where they're gonna be dressing up as the career that they want to pursue, "Shine in the Dark," which is a blackout, and "Bright Lights," which is neon, which is also the theme to our football game that day. To end the week, we have our homecoming rally, as well as homecoming football game. And the fun will continue into Saturday, where we have our homecoming dance, which we are gonna be using at the NPR, as well as a few classrooms. We're having all three leadership classes participate to put on this amazing dance for all of our students. Next, I'd like to share with you some updates on our clubs and programs. We recently held our annual club fair, where twenty-eight clubs participated. And it really showcased our diverse student body interests. Some of those clubs being the Environmental Club, GSA Club, Pickleball Club, Red Clocks, Cross Club, and Crochet and Knitting Club, just to name a few. And then over the weekend, Band, Color Guard, and our Thespian Group participated in the Harvest Festival Parade. In addition, our Thespian Group hosted a crafts booth where kids can do arts and crafts. And Eagle Robotics was there showcasing their program. Dozens of students from all around the school volunteered their time to help monitor and be a part of these events. FFA has also been holding bi-weekly lunchtime events, which approximately one hundred and twenty-five students attend each time that they put them on. They are also sending twenty-one students to the Green Hand Conference, which is happening soon. And Avid recently hosted its freshman penny ceremony, where seniors come down and pen freshmen, and it's an event for staff and parents to come out. And next week, they are holding an Avid barbecue to raise funds for their program. In academics, we continue to recognize students who follow our core values, which is empathy, accountability, growth, leadership, and excellence every day by giving out these Eagle Expectations cards. Staff has them. Staff, teachers, and then have these cards, and they give them to students who believe that they're showing one of these five core values. And they bring these cards to our leadership room, where we hole punch it, give it back to them, write down what they got the card for, and give them a sweet treat, which is just normally candy. The kids really love that part. And we have also been starting something new called Eagle Every Day Award, where we focus on one of our core values each month, this month being empathy. Our advanced ceramics class recently dedicated their time and effort into creating these beautiful ceramic bowls for the thirteenth annual Empty Bowls Event, benefiting the Five Cities Homeless Coalition. And it has also been a super busy month for our College and Career Center, which have been hosting college presentations and gearing up to take a busload of students to the Cuesta... the Cuesta College Night, where forty colleges and universities are going to be present. And then finally, in athletic, last week, we hosted... sorry, last week, our cheer hosted a cheer clinic for local students and kids, and they showcased those talents that they learned at that cheer camp at the football game, and it was absolutely adorable. And then football is currently four and one, and has their senior night coming up, as well as band, cheer, and color guard. Girls' water polo are currently undefeated in league for, I think, the twenty-second year straight, and are twelve and three in total, as well as have two girls committing to D1 programs. In softball, Jayden Valdez recently committed to a D1 program at the University of North Dakota. And that is all. Thank you so much for letting me speak at this meeting, and I can't wait for the next meeting to share with you all the amazing things going on at Aurora Grande High School. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nora Reed from Napo Mo High.
Good evening. I'm not Nora Reed. I'm actually the ASB secretary in place of our president and vice president, who are both participating in sporting events this evening. But this month, student leadership has been busy. ASB has hosted a chalk art event throughout campus for the artists on campus. We had two home football games themed construction and western. We also ran Club Day, where we had a great turnout with over a dozen clubs that were represented. And Link Crew held Kindness Week this month, where they promoted positivity on campus and hosted connection activities such as rock painting for the students. FFA leadership ran their annual pool party meeting, which is always really successful. And they also started different activities, like tailgates before our football games, and they also had a Wear Gold for Childhood Cancer Awareness Day. The leadership classes all joined towards the end of the month for a wonderful new tradition, where we all bond at the bowling alley, and we did a little scavenger hunt there, so that was really great, too. Throughout the rest of campus, our Titan Excellence Coalition is thriving. We newly invited New Tech members, further tightening the gap between our schools. We had our Back to School Night and Military Day to inform our students and parents throughout campus. In terms of behavior, we earned an eighty-nine percent of the possible clean campus points and ninety-one percent of student-earned privileges for Titan Fridays. At our kids camp, which... I'm sorry, Titan Fridays, at our second community advisory, one hundred and ninety-four students participated and went to clubs. Our cheer held the annual kids camp, which had to be postponed due to circumstances of a power outage across campus, but was still really successful the next week and was a lot of fun. Our Agriculture Mechanics class received a grant from Airgas, receiving, among other things, a new plasma cutter. And the volleyball team had the Digford Delaney Scholarship fundraiser alumni game. And lastly, our blood drive is coming up tomorrow, along with our FFA students participating in our opening and closing ceremonies, which is just some of the starting events throughout October, which we also have homecoming and a lot of other events coming up. So thank you, and I hope you all have a wonderful October.
One more thing. So Nora, we didn't get to see... You didn't introduce you to us. What's your name?
I'm Addison Tahada.
Addison, nice to meet you. Alright, Elizabeth Moore from Central Coast New Tech High School.
Hello, everyone. It's good to see you all again this evening. I'm excited to share you all everything that New Tech has been doing since the last board meeting and show you what we're currently working on. So our ASB class has been hard at work planning our homecoming dance, which is on October twenty-sixth. This year's homecoming theme is "Under the Stars," and we have a lot of fun spirit days and lunchtime activities planned. At the dance, we will be featuring student DJs from our digital media arts pathway, like we did last year. Another exciting event coming up is our annual Fall Feast on Monday, October seventh. Students will have a day to eat food served by leadership and parent volunteers, participate in various activities, and attend a rally. The reason we have Fall Feast is to celebrate all of our students for completing their first projects of the year and keep them motivated and excited about school. We also hosted our first student senate meeting on September ninth and received feedback on Culture Days and some more ideas for homecoming and different spirit days. On September sixteenth, we hosted our club fair. We had nineteen clubs participating, and many of the students were able to find a club that they felt compelled to join. Last, ASB has started our first intramural of the year, which is dodgeball, and we have five teams participating. And it's an event that many students love to watch. For some community events, we currently have a fundraiser where our students are selling Sylvester Burger cards to raise money for leadership and senior activities. We also plan on having another dine and donate at Menchies Frozen Yogurt on October seventeenth. And then for academics, our ninth graders are continuing to work on their This Is Me project. This is their first professional presentation at New Tech, where they will present about themselves in front of the rest of their grade. These will take place on October eighth through the eleventh, and it's truly a momentous occasion for the freshmen. Our tenth graders are continuing to learn about safety and chemistry. In American Studies, they are finishing up learning about the musical Hamilton and will begin their American Perspectives presentation and essay. The topic for their essay is on whether or not America has realized its founding ideals. Our juniors are working on their Salon Night project. The... This project is where students create their own political parties and present their party's beliefs on topics like foreign policy, healthcare, military intervention, and taxes. During Salon Night, they will try and get members from the public to sign up for their political party, and the party with the most votes will get extra credit. This is our first event night of the year. It's on October seventeenth, and we would love for any of you who want to attend to come and join us that night. And if you are interested, make sure to reach out to our principal, Mrs. Butler. And then for our seniors, they just had a very helpful college application night on September twenty-third, hosted by our counselor, Mrs. Ortiz, and our career tech, Mrs. Sanchez. They are also working on their college applications and their ag glider project in physics. Lastly, the Napo Mo High School Theater Company Show, "Here's and Villains," has begun rehearsals, and many of the students who are in the show attend New Tech, and we are very excited to see them perform in November. And many of our students are also participating in fall sports at NHS and are doing amazing. Thank you so much for listening. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to seeing all of you next month.
Hi, and from Lopez Pacific View Academy in the city, Jace Zavala.
Hello, good evening, board and attendants. I'm Jace Zavala from PVA. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you the news and events from Lopez and Pacific View. Lopez High School news. For career technician education, we have our college representatives coming every Wednesday. We're currently working on having the military branches coming to campus starting in October. There is a field trip to observe and participate in the Allen Hancock's Career Fair on October fourth. Lastly, we're looking forward to cash for college events at other local high school campuses for our students to attend and gain information on FOSFA, the Dream Act, and other financial aid. In consumer math, the class has finished a stock market project where students invested virtually in the stock market. The top investors after eight weeks won an award. Regarding science, on September eighteenth, tenth, Lopez students went on a field trip to Oso Flaco Lake, where they learned about the local ecosystem and got to observe local fauna in their natural habitats. Students had the opportunity to see a wide variety of wild birds up close, including the Virginia rail, American coot, and double-cressed cormats, as well as the incredible diversity of plants across the national reserve. Nearly one-fifth of our student body participates in a social and emotional learning group each week with Bonnie Davis. The Lopez Independent Study Program is currently full and has a waiting list. Students can serve our community by hosting a bimonthly community food market at Lopez. We begin this year and will continue it this year. We'll give away our... food from eggs, milk, and cheese, to fresh fruits and vegetables, as well as mini pantry samples. Our first spirit was last Thursday. Pacific View Academy news. Our students have started enjoying Fun Friday. They like spending their time with peers and creating art projects, working in the garden and enjoying lunch together. We have reading time, Lego Club, and Guardian Club, and gym time on Fridays from eleven-thirty a.m. to two forty-five p.m. to grades kindergarten through eighth. Our librarian, Michelle Penaflore, submitted a Good Idea Award application to Napo Mo Lions Club, and we won. The award recognizes our innovative approach and dedication to enhancing the educational environment that they will be donating much-needed bookshelves to PVA. Investing in additional shelving and supplies will significantly improve the financial and appeal of our library. These enhancements will create a more engaging and organized space, ultimately fostering greater enthusiasm and reading among students. That's it for Lopez and PVA. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to items of interest from the board. Would anyone like to start?
Ms. Mayor? I had the pleasure of attending the Listening Tour at Judkins Middle School and Aurora Grande High School. A little different this year. Dr. Fawcett and Cabinet were leading the participants, the teachers that were in attendance, and other staff members to focus on qualities that we want in our graduating seniors. And they were very engaged in cooperative input and sharing out, and it was refreshing to hear the comments being made. Hopefully, potentials for our graduates. It's great.
Anyone else? Ms. Santos?
Yes. It was a busy week, I must say. I, too, went to the Listening Tour at Judkins and AG. And it's so nice to see a new generation come and so full of energy and so forth, and exchanging ideas with staff and so forth, seeing them work together. The principals were right there with them. They spoke like in teams, and it's like a competition of sorts. But Dr. Fawcett, you and your team also did well in doing this presentation. I commend you for that. And then in the evening on Saturday, Mr. Stewart and I got to go to the Filipino Sister City, the exchange of the cities. And Mr. Stewart, do you remember the date that happened?
That they became Sister City? I know it was thirty-three years ago. Was it October first?
Yes.
Great.
That's today. Anyway, it was fun to see the culture that we have here in Grover City, Grover Beach, come all this time and they exchanged, and they honored the mayor, Karen Wright, from Grover. And then they introduced Dawn and myself. We got to talk with them. It's wonderful to see this culture still with their roots down deep inside. And I had mentioned to Mr. Stewart that maybe we need to do that here in our district, the different cultures that we have. As you know, of course, we have the Filipino community. We have the Portuguese community that has a celebration every year. And there's many other nationalities that we could put together and have one great big... what do you want to say? A celebration of sorts. This is what CMR is. And I got to sit and explain to them what our district is doing, where the money has gone from the school bond from the last time. And I invited them to come to our school district and look at all the new and different facilities, the improvements they have done, and the reasons why we've had to do some of the things. So they were very pleased, and I told them about the culinary school, of course, state-of-the-art. And I also mentioned about the beauty school that we now have, which they did not know. And I encouraged them, "Visit our schools. Your children go there, and there's where they learn." And Dawn, I don't know if you want to speak about our police officer from AG who spoke? Okay, I don't want to take it out, but... We had a police officer from AG who was the master speaker, and he told about how he came over from the Philippines at the age of three, and he learned the English language and learned his family values and so forth. And he said if it wasn't for the schools, that he'd probably taken the wrong turn. And now he went to Allen Hancock College, and he's now a police officer. He was in Grover, and now he's in AG. But what an inspiration for a lot of these younger kids who want to find a career of sorts. They could do it. They could do anything they want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just... I just want to say, I was reflecting back today on my days as a teacher in this district and remembering how October sometimes felt like a slog. So exciting. We get back to school, and things are happening, and then, you know, there's a long stretch without a break. And so I just want to give a word of acknowledgement and encouragement to our teachers and staff about, you know, the hard work you do, and I recognize the work you do, and I honor you for that. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, President Martin. I, too, was on the Listening Tours. I went to the Mubble High School, Fair Grove, and then Pacific View Academy in Lopez. Just great to be out there, be on our campuses, have conversations, and just be with the teams. The great thing about the Sister City night especially is the... how supportive they are of that community, is of our students as well. And so they're always handing out scholarships, and two of our students here that are in the district received scholarships that night. So it was great to be there and sort of honor that and then thank them for supporting our students. And then this past weekend was Harvest Festival, and it was just so great to see our robotics team out there helping with the fish fry on Friday night. And then our band was sort of leading the parade on Saturday and with our Thespian teams, who were very filled with musical theater for a very long time. But it was just great to sort of be... Really reinforce the community, the CMR community, and it's just sort of great to be out there. Thank you.
Okay, I, too, had the opportunity to go to the Listening Tour at Dorteia Lang and then also visited Shell Beach and Judkins last week. So the school board all has been out looking at sites, working with staff members, listening to staff, sharing their positive reflections and their concerns. And when I was at Judkins, all the staff was wearing little yellow ribbons, and I didn't know why. So I asked them, and they shared with me that one of their staff members had passed away. So I did want to read a little tribute to her and take a minute of reflection when we're done. So Nora Hasinto was a bilingual instructional aide at Judkins Middle School. It is with deep sadness that I share the news of our dear friend Nora, who was diagnosed with cancer just two weeks ago and tragically passed away yesterday, September fifteenth. The rapid progression of the illness has left her family and friends all in shock and heartache. Nora was a remarkable person who touched the lives of many, and her absence will be deeply felt. Please keep her family and loved ones in your thoughts during this incredibly difficult time. Nora was single, and she was only thirty-five years old, and will be deeply missed by the Judkins staff and the whole of the CMR team, the CMR community. If we could just take just a second, close your eyes, and have a thought for poor Nora and her family. Thank you. And if you're interested, there is a GoFundMe for Nora on GoFundMe to support Nora's family, Nora Hasinto. That's where I read the tribute from.
Any other items of interest from the board before we move to the superintendent's report? Nope? Okay.
Alright, thank you, President Martin. Well, I get to do some celebrations tonight for the superintendent's report, and I'm looking forward to that. And I do have a couple bullet points right after the celebration, so please don't forget to come back to me, because I want to talk about those, too. So tonight, we're gonna talk about a state recognition that five of our schools received. This is the statewide Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support Award for schools that have done an outstanding job going through a self-analysis and developing key traits and indicators that they want to see amongst their students, then implementing it across the campus, campus-wide. And so it's a pretty in-depth and thorough process that they go through, and it takes a lot of time, energy, and effort, and it has a really positive benefit on the culture and climate of the campus. And it's done in collaboration, not only with students, but also with families as well, too. So I'm really excited to share the names of these schools and the level of award that they achieved. And what I'm gonna do is just, if you're here from those schools, when I call your school's name, please stand up, and we're gonna give you a round of applause. So we're gonna start off with Harlow Elementary School, that was awarded the Silver Recognition. Let's give them a big round of applause. And each one of these schools has been years of work towards this, too, so it's really great to see the recognition at the state level. And then Napo Mo High School, our first high school to receive this award as well. Napo Mo High School achieved the Silver Recognition as well, too. Let's give them a round of applause. And Mesa Middle School, also recognized as a Gold Level. Mesa Middle School, round of applause. And Grover Heights Elementary School, honored with Gold as well. Grover Heights. And last but not least, with a Platinum, Lang Elementary School. So this has been a long-term focus of our district, working on this PBIS work. And these schools have gone above and beyond to make sure that they're implementing it with fidelity and then going through the process of applying for these awards. So we're very appreciative of them. Let's give them one more big round of applause. Alright, so a couple other things that I just want to highlight that I attended last week. I was able to attend the AGHS and Napo Mo High School football game. I kind of like to call it the CMR Bowl, because it's our two high schools competing against one another. It was fantastic to see the sportsmanship on the field and in the audience. The band was phenomenal. The cheering sections with the students were great. Our schools are just doing a great job building that kind of positive culture and morale around the district. So that was a great event. And then I got to do some work with the Harvest Festival. I didn't get to attend the main portion of it because I was at the football game, but I did get to set up the fish fry trailer with the Rotary Club. And that trailer, if you have seen it in years past, looked kind of worn and tattered, and it needed a refresh. And Clayton Carlson, one of our ag teachers who's here in the audience today, had his students, and he also helped bring it back to life, and it looked phenomenal. And I heard the fish even tasted better this year, and that was his students' work. So Clayton, big round of applause. And that is it for me today. Thank you.
Well, I wish I had cake and cupcakes for all of you employees at our schools that won those PBIS awards, because we don't take it lightly how much collaboration and how much work that takes from your sites to excel at that level. And when I see smiling faces of staff all together being here in the evening, I really appreciate it. So thank you very much, and please take back to your staffs our congratulations for those well-run awards. Alright, I'm gonna give you a minute in case you wanted to politely slither out.
All right, I'm going to give you a minute in case you wanted to politely slither out. I didn't know.
Here's some snakes out there.
And Fidel, a trooper staying in with his team there. He's so cute. Very good. Muy guapo. Good job.
Gracias.
Bye, goodnight.
Bye, sweetie. Oh, is he cute? All righty. We're going to get on. You finished up with your superintendent's report?
I'm finished up. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. That was such a positive one. Thank you so much. Before we head into our consent calendar, I want to remind you all of some of the things that we have going on in our meeting. First off, there's speaker cards in the back, either blue or yellow. Please fill one out if you'd like to speak at our public comment time or on any items on our agenda. Señora Hernandez, please raise your hand, is here today if you need any translation to Spanish. We are happy to help you with that. And on the last pages of our printed agenda are our decorum standards, and please read them and enjoy them. And our security team, thank you for being here tonight. Guidance about public comment. Public comments are an opportunity for members of the community to address the board of trustees in the meeting of the school board that was open to the public. Members of the public are encouraged to address the board concerning any item on the agenda or any item of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Public comments are limited to at most three minutes and no more than 20 minutes total for one subject matter, under the discretion of the presiding officer. The board will not take any action or have discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except as authorized by law. This is why the board does not respond during the public comment section of our agenda. It is important to recognize that opinions and comments shared here are those of the individual speakers and may not represent the views of our district, the board, or our staff. LUCMR is committed to fostering an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment at our meetings and at our schools. We respect everyone's right to express their ideas and opinions. All remarks must be free from personal attacks, particularly those based on legally protected categories such as race, religion, disability, or sexual orientation. Our district is dedicated to serving and nurturing all our students, guiding them to become responsible, ethical, and productive members of society. To honor this mission, please make sure your comments avoid profanity, demonstrate tolerance towards differing viewpoints, and exhibit exemplary conduct. Our students are watching and learning from us at all times. Please be aware that any disturbance or intentional interruption of the meeting is not permissible. In accordance with recent enacted law, excessive disruption by any individual or group will result in the board president revoking the individual or group's privilege to address the board. Disruptive participants may be warned and, if necessary, removed from the meeting. We value your participation in the public meeting of the Board of Education, and thank you for your cooperation in maintaining the efficiency, effectiveness, and stability of LUCMR. So now we're going on to the consent calendar action items for tonight. These are items one through eight. They typically are very routine items. Did anyone have any questions on items one through eight or want to poll items one through eight? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment for the consent calendar action items, items one through eight. Would anyone in the public like to come to the podium and comment on items one through eight? Seeing no movement in the audience, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for comment. Anyone want to make comment on items one through eight? I just wanted to make one, and that is item number seven, the quarter report on Williams' uniform complaints. That's a lot of work that wins right at the beginning of school. So thank you to the curriculum department for overseeing. This has to do with instruction materials, textbooks at all our sites, making sure we have sufficiency for everyone. It is a tedious act for whoever at each site is working on this, so thank you very much. Entertained motion. Move approval of consent calendar from one to eight. It's been moved by Ms. Santos, second by Ms. Candell, to approve the consent calendar action items one through eight. Roll call vote, please.
Santos?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes six zero. All right, we're already to item schedule for discussion, possible action. Item number nine, which is approval award of contract to RDC Contractors, Inc. as general contractor at Lang Elementary School for kindergarten classrooms, fire alarm project number 19667, Fund 25. Mr. Eichberger?
Thank you, President Martin. This evening before you, we do have a contract for two of our kindergarten slash transitional kindergarten classrooms. So those are our jumbo classrooms that are 1,350 square feet that would each also have an embedded student restroom. So the little tiny potties for our little youngest kiddos. That said, RDC is the winning bidder and has had several projects for the district with a high degree of success. And they are currently in their final stages completing the sixth classroom complex at Grover Heights Elementary that our Citizens Bond Oversight Committee had an opportunity to tour before their meeting last week. And they are also starting or have started work on the TKK complex at Branch Elementary. In addition to the classroom buildings, there is also some upgrades that will be occurring for the fire alarm system, as well as some underground power. The winning bid and the careful consideration does come in for RDC Contractors with a bid tabulation of $2,530,000. It's recommended that the board would approve this as the winning bid so that the project could potentially start as soon as October 3rd.
All right. Any questions from the board for Mr. Eichberger? Ms. Santos? Mr. Eichberger, what was the opinions of the people that went on the tour?
They were very impressed. Grover Heights has this interesting staggered elevation where the rooms, while they back up next to each other because of elevation changes at the site, one of the three classroom or there's six classrooms, three of them on one side of the wing are slightly above the other. But overall, the interior was still being finished, meaning they were in the process of doing drywall. But the overall look and approach to the school site was very, very, very pleasing for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and they were also very excited to see another one of the projects being close to being finished so that we can get our students in those newer classrooms and out of portables as soon as possible.
What was their impression about the NPR room?
Man, I just have to pause. Every time I get to talk about the NPRs, they are fantastic. And the comparison to three modular buildings pressed together to a brand-new NPR where they have the ability to host their own talent shows and with the full audio sound is really a game changer for these kiddos at those elementary, the three elementary sites that were able to have the new NPRs. And they were thoroughly impressed by the quality of the construction and also the fact that we had bid those out together at once. So we did get really reasonable pricing for all three of those at the same time.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons why I like telling the public, "Go see our schools so you know exactly where your money's being spent." And so speaking to the dinner on Saturday night, that was one of the impressions I wanted them to see, the improvements for our own kids. So I'm glad you did that. Thank you. Does anyone else have questions from the board for Mr. Eichberger regarding the RDC contract? No? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Does anyone in the audience have public comment on item number? The kindergarten additions at Dorthia Lang Elementary School. Seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for comments. Anyone from the board have any comment?
The beds are all the, they're so close together. I mean, that was, that's a good thing, I think. And I was at Grover Heights with those pushed-together modulars. In fact, my husband was one of the people that worked on the three schools to get those. But the ceilings, and I mean, block, and the ceiling was right there. You put risers on, the kids could touch the ceiling, and it was, it was not good. It was what we could afford at the time. They're beautiful.
So which portables are leaving? Have they already been taken off?
There, there was a handful that had already been removed. And then the ones that we had initially planned on removing, there was, I don't remember if it was two or three additional portables on the northern part of campus. Those are actually going to be rehabilitated using ELOC money to have as an extension of the school day program with their own facility.
Perfect. It's wonderful. All right. I just had one comment, and that was, you know, RDC Contractors, we've worked with them a lot. And I like the fact that they want to keep bidding on our projects and the fact that they've done a TKK classroom, you know, to learn what's best, what doesn't work, what does work. You know, you want to work with someone who knows what they're doing. So, and we've had a good rapport with them, which is, and they're local, so that's nice, too. All right. Looking for a motion.
I'll move approval of the award of contract to RDC Contractors Incorporated as general contractor at Lang Elementary School for kindergarten classrooms, fire alarm project, fire alarm project number 19667, Fund 25.
Second. It's been moved by Candell, second by Ms. Mayor. Roll call vote, please.
Candell?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes six zero. Item number 10, the first reading revision of board policies and administrative regulations. Dr. Fassett?
Thank you, President Martin. So each one of these policies incorporates some updated laws that have gone into place. These are policies that were provided by CSBA and recommended as updates. Each division has reviewed and recommended. The red lines before you today. This is the first reading. They will be brought back to you for a second reading at the next board meeting. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the first reading of these board policies? They do include management of district assets, accounting, food service, child nutrition program, food service operations, cafeteria fund, free and reduced priced meals for students, and dismissal, suspension, disciplinary action for employees. I added those four students, four employees in there. Any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment. If you would like to make public comment on item number 10, please come forward and state your concerns. Seeing no movement, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board. This is a first reading. It doesn't usually require a vote, but if there's any comments that anyone from the board would like to make, please do so.
Real quick, I mean, I just want to touch on, I'm so proud of us being out ahead of the free and reduced priced meals, ahead of the state in terms of being able to give a free breakfast and a free lunch to any student on our campuses. It's great to see it captured in language again, too, and our commitment to actually nutritious meals as well. So nice to see it in print. Where we know, we know it's in practice.
Well, that's the whole state of California.
Yep, it is now.
Yeah. And I went through the whole employee discipline, suspension wording for every single word. And it seems to me that as a district and as an employer, we are enormously fair and procedural oriented when it comes to how we deal with employees who might have forgotten to stay within the boundaries. Okay, we're not going to have a vote on that, so we're going to move to item 11. Item 11 is also a revision of board policies and administrative regs, but this time it is approval, and it's a second reading. We have seen these at our last meeting. Dr. Fassett?
Thank you, President Martin. So you kind of covered the basis, and this is the second reading. I'll go ahead and read the board policies, our titles this go around. So we're working through the comprehensive safety plans, the board policy AR, emergencies and disaster preparedness plans, board policies and AR, and then several board policies and ARs involving employee safety. So it is recommended that you approve these tonight. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the board for Dr. Fassett on item number 11, the second reading of these board policies? I'm going to open it up to public comment. Would anyone from the public like to comment on item number 11, second reading of board policies?
Put it in there was that when an employee makes a complaint about their safety, that they cannot be retaliated against. I know that UCPs already have that written in board policy, that you can't retaliate against people for filing UCPs, yet this district retaliated against me for it severely for reporting violations of California Education Code, among other things. I hope sincerely that when your staff make complaints, that you do not retaliate against them and you follow your policies with practices.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else like to comment on item number 11? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for comments on the second reading, revision of board policies. I went through the whole packet. There was some, some additions, including 18. District policy and/or plan related to pandemics. I have a feeling that wasn't in there five years ago, just clue. So it's really in the gamut regarding strategies for suicide prevention, safety of our employees and our students, procedures for implementing when a person interferes or disrupts a school activity, remains on campus after having been asked to leave, or creates a disruption with intent to threaten the immediate physical safety of students or staff. Just really bringing things into 2024. So, thank you. Any, any other comments? I'm looking for a motion.
Move approval, second reading, revision of board policies and administrative regulations.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Stewart, second by trustee Mayor, to approve item number 11, approval, second reading, revision of board policies and administrative regulations. Roll call vote, please.
Stewart?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Board, motion passes six zero. We're moving on to, we have a really quick meeting tonight. Seems like we put everything into the spring, man, and we just get loaded with extra meetings and very long meetings in April and May as the school year comes to a close. We are at public comment on items not on the agenda. I did get a blue speaker card from Jean Bern Slater. If you'd like to come up, reflect on the things I said about public comment prior to your visit to the microphone, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here, President Martin and Board of Trustees. I'm Jean Bern Slater. I'm president of the Five Cities Pismo Beach American Association of University Women. And I first of all have to tell you that I've sat in the superintendent chair before, and I've really appreciated being here and seeing these wonderful students and staff being honored. I had no idea I was going to be at a short meeting with a wonderful awarding. So thank you very much. Okay, to get to my point, I wanted to thank this current board for the connections that you have with our Five Cities Pismo Beach American Association of University Women. I'm just going to recount five of those connections. Eager readers, we give books to great students in second, fourth, and sixth grade at three different elementary schools, and every student walks away with a book. Women in history, we portray women in March of the year, Women History Month, and go into the classrooms and portray a woman in history. Now, don't tell anyone, but I'm going to try to be Eleanor Roosevelt this year. And if I do it right, the students will believe me, because sometimes it does work. We also have Tech Trek, where we send the summer of the seventh grade girls, they go to a university, and it's usually University of California, Santa Barbara, for a science camp for a week. So they get exposed to science as well as college life early. We also give college scholarships to girls, and the senior girls that are graduating and going on to further their education. And it's a wonderful opportunity to do that as well. And the last one I'd like to support is the avid of support in the classroom. We're doing more and more things for avid students that we, which is the advancement via individual determination. And we are going to be providing some classroom materials from now on in terms of avid classrooms. So I just wanted to thank this current board for all of the support and the connections that you've put together through the community and the American Association of University Women. And thank you very much.
You're welcome. Well, wait. Ms. Slater? We want to honor groups like AEW, Rotary, the type of groups that support our
We wanna honor groups like AEW, Rotary, the type of groups that support our students. And almost every single thing you said tonight, I knew about. And my mom wasn't there and she was always a hot pot every March.
So can we make comment? So while I was, they've been doing this for many, many years. While I was teaching, the women in history came to my classroom too. It was always wonderful, wonderful. All right. We're at public comment and items not on the agenda. Would someone else from the audience like to come up for public comment on items not on the agenda?
I would like to know why Luciar is still violating California Education Code three-eight-zero-four-three and three-eight-zero-four-two, especially with the weather that's coming up this week. Students need access to water and they have the right to have it on their person. And per Education Code three-eight-zero-four-three, it's your responsibility to tell them that. I let Ms. Handy know this and she wasn't concerned with students having their water. She said if parents are worried about it, they can let her know. And I said, well, how can the parents know if you're not informing them? And she laughed it off. She wasn't interested, which explains why she needs a four-year contract. Because if Ms. Vicky Meeger, Dawn Stewart, and Dee Santos are out of the board, Ms. Handy, Ms. Dixon, and Mr. Eichberger could be out of positions. I would also like to point out that Colleen Martin, on your election page, you call out the people running for these current seats for blatantly saying they're gonna violate California Education Code. You violate California Education Code and I brought it to your attention multiple times. And your response was to retaliate against me and try to weaponize our law enforcement. Thankfully, they have discretion and they saw through all of your manipulative, deceitful, and retaliatory tactics. But I think it's really important to note that both times, those law enforcement officers were not on Luciar's side. In fact, they said, you should go to court. I'm not a judge, but it's pretty clear retaliation. And I think that your behaviors are horrendous. They're disgusting. And you guys should all be ashamed of yourselves.
All right. Would anyone else like to make public comment on items not on the agenda?
So I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but just because all the board members had feedback on the listening tours, I wanna share that teachers are not very happy with the format of listening tours this year. Usually there's an opportunity for a forum, there's a discussion, everybody gets to talk. And now it's scripted. You have the parking lot to write a note and put it up on the wall, but you don't actually get to talk about anything. So that's what I'm hearing from most sites that have done their listening tours.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make public comment to the school board tonight? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment on items not on the agenda. We are thrilled that we have no student discipline tonight and we are going to move to adjourn. Our next meeting will be October fifteenth, right here, at seven PM. We're adjourned.